Let's pray and we'll get started on chapter 23 tonight. Lord, thank you so much for this privilege that we have to come together in person by way of social media. Thank you, Lord, for giving us that gift to be able to be at home but be in Bible study together and to encourage one another. And so I just pray, Lord, that you would hide me behind the cross tonight and that you would guard my thoughts and my words and just give us clarity of mind and speech and help us just to soak in what we're going to look at tonight. And I pray that you would make a difference in us through your word and change us for your glory in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, in chapter 23 through 25 tonight, we're going to start there. Last week, if you remember, I did ask you to mark the word "Pharisee." I hope that you did that when you read through it. And that was the only one word that I asked you all to do if you're studying inductively. And I wondered if anybody happened to see a key repeated phrase, "Woe to you." And if you did, did you maybe circle it, underline it? Anytime that you see a word or a phrase that's repeated several times, that's for you to pay close attention to and to mark it any way that you want to. I didn't ask you to do that when I asked you to do Pharisee. So that's just to kind of get you started for those of you who are new to the study, one thing at a time. And so just always pay close attention to the key repeated phrases. But if you will recall in chapter 22, verse 46, Jesus put the shutdown on the Pharisees. And it says that no one was able to answer him a word, nor did anyone dare from that day on to ask him another question. And we begin chapter 23 in verses 1 and 2 with Jesus speaking to the crowds and the disciples, saying, "The scribes and the Pharisees have seated themselves in the chair of Moses." Now let's read verse 3 in chapter 23. "Therefore, all that they tell you do and observe, but do not do according to their deeds; for they say things and do not do them." So right there in verse 3, the Pharisees are mentioned three different times. Right there, I hope that you saw that and made reference to that and colored it in the same way. So he's telling us what to do and what not to do. And so when I saw the word "deeds," I looked it up and it means works, it means labors, labor, excuse me, it means doing. So, "They tell others what to do and do not do them." And I have a note in my Bible that says, "Kim, be careful," beside that passage of Scripture. I don't want to be guilty of ever using any type of position to tell others what to do and not do them because that makes me like them and who do I want to be more like? And so that's just, that's where I'm putting the brakes on right there. Will I get it right every time? Absolutely not. None of us do, none of us will. But we can certainly strive to help one another. And I wanted once again to review the definitions of Pharisee. It's just, they are separatist and they're exclusively religious folks. So that in this chapter would be a great place to put those notes because you have underlined or you have colored or circled however you marked Pharisees. And that's a great place for you to put that definition in the margin of your Bible. Also, if you recall, you read and you saw hypocrites, which is an actor under assumed character. It is a dissimilar. And we're going to do something in this chapter that we haven't done thus far. I'm basically going to read the whole chapter. But we'll stop and we'll talk about some of the verses and look at the cross references. So if you want to look at your Bible with me, we're going to start at verse 4 and we're going to read the chapter together. And I will put emphasis where I've asked you to mark, just in case you maybe missed something. So, verse 4, "They," talking about the Pharisees, "they tie up heavy burdens and lay them on men's shoulders, but they themselves are unwilling to move them with so much as a finger." But, and if you'll notice, and we're going to talk more about this when we get to chapter 24, if you noticed how I marked some of these words that you're going to see in this chapter, okay? "But they do all their deeds to be noticed by men; for they broaden their phylacteries," meaning small cases containing Scripture texts, "worn on the left arm and forehead for religious purposes." That's what the definition in my Bible tells me that phylacteries are. "They are unwilling to move them with so much of a finger, but they do all their deeds to be noticed by men; for they broaden their phylacteries and lengthen the tassels of their garments." Besides that, the passage of Scripture, I have, "How much like the Pharisees am I?" Verse 6, "They," the Pharisees, "love the places of honor at banquet and the chief seats in the synagogues." Beside that passage of Scripture, I have Luke 14, verses 7 through 11. And let's turn there and look at Luke 14, 7 through 11. Luke 14, verse 7 says, "And he," meaning Jesus, "began speaking a parable to the invited guests when he noticed how they had been picking out the places of honor at the table, saying to them, 'When you are invited by someone to a wedding feast, do not take the place of honor; for someone more distinguished than you may have been invited by him,' verse 9, "'and he who invited you both will come and say to you, 'Give your place to this man;' and then in disgrace you proceed to occupy the last place,' verse 10, "'but when you are invited, go and recline at the last place, so that when the one who has invited you comes, he may say to you, 'Friend, move up higher; then you will have honor in the sight of all who are at the table with you.'" Pay attention to verse 11. "For everyone who exalts himself will be humbled; and he who humbles himself will be exalted." It made me think, before we go on to verse 7, it made me think of the very first time that I ever went to speak at the women's conference in Ohio. And so I didn't know so. And when I walked in, I went like to the middle section of the church to sit because people were still coming in. I had no idea who was who. I had never been there, only brickhead. But I had gone in there and sat down in the middle of the church when someone came and got me and said, "No, you need to be up here. We have the front row reserved for our speakers." I had no idea. Now, I'm glad that I did that. I would have never, upon my own thinking, have gone up there and said, "Here I am, I'm going to sit in the front row." That's just not who I am. Thankfully, it worked out well. They came and got me and said, "No, you're supposed to be sitting on the front row." How humiliated and embarrassed would I be? And I just thought so highly of myself that I just marched myself up there to the front row and then they say, "Sorry, but that's not for you." You know? So that's basically what I thought of when I read this passage of Scripture. Let's start looking at verse 7. "And respectful greetings in the marketplaces and being called rabbi by men," verse 7. "But do not be called rabbi; for one is your teacher, and you are all brothers," verse 9. "Do not call anyone on earth your father; for one is your father, he who is in heaven." Now, if you'll notice this phrase right here, "do not," basically anytime I see that "do not," "do not," I take my red colored pencil and I color "do not" because I need to pay really close attention to what I'm not supposed to be doing. So "do not do," da-da-da-da. So it's basically a red pencil, "do not." Verse 10, "Do not be called leaders; for one is your leader, that is Christ; but the greatest among you shall be your servant." Above that verse, I have, "Lord, help me to always serve." And then beside that verse, I have Pharisees and I have hypocrites written down with the definitions. Because you know what, long after we're finished with the book of Matthew and then our preacher or our teacher has us to turn over to Matthew, guess what? Our notes are there. That just reiterates what we've learned in our Bible study. Verse 12, "Whoever exalts himself shall be humbled, and whoever humbles himself shall be exalted." Again, that cross reference in Luke. "But woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, because you shut off the kingdom of heaven from people; for you do not enter in yourselves, nor do you allow those who are entering to go in." Verse 14, "Woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites." Do you see those, those three words together there? "Because you devour widows' houses, and for a pretense you make long prayers; therefore you will receive greater condemnation, or damnation, or judgment." Verse 15 starts off with, "Woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, because you travel around on sea and land to make one cross alive, or one convert; and when he becomes one, you make him twice as much as, as much a son of hell as yourselves." Who's the yourselves there? Hypocrites, Pharisees. Verse 16, "Woe to you, blind guides." Let's look at Matthew 15, 14 really quick. Do y'all remember this verse? When we got to what it reminded us of, Matthew 15, verse 14? "Let them alone; they are blind guides of the blind; and if a blind man guides a blind man, both will fall into a pit." Remember when we said that reminds us of the phrase, "Let the blind lead the blind." So I put that up above that verse, above blind guides. "Woe to you, blind guides, who say, 'Whoever swears by the temple,' that is nothing; but whoever swears by the gold of the temple is obligated." Verse 17, "You fools, and blind men! Which is more important, the gold or the temple that sanctified the gold? And whoever swears by the altar," that is nothing; "but whoever swears by the offering on it is obligated." Again, "you blind men!" Which is more important, the offering or the altar that sacrifices the offering? Therefore, whoever swears by the altar swears both by the altar and by everything on it; and whoever swears by the temple swears both by the temple and by him who dwells within it." Verse 22, "And whoever swears by heaven swears both by the throne of God and by him who sits upon it." Verse 23 starts, "Woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites." Notice that exclamation point. "For you tithe, mint, and deal in human and have neglected the weightier provisions of the law." Listen to this, "justice and mercy and faithfulness; but these are the things you should have done without neglecting the others." Tithe is more than your money. There is justice, there is mercy, there is faithfulness. 24, "You blind guides, who strain out a knatt and swallow a cannel. Woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites; for you claim the outside of the cup and of the dish; but inside they are full of robbery and self-indulgence." 26, "You blind Pharisees, first clean the inside of the cup and the dish, so that the outside of it may become clean." Also, verse 27, I hope you marked it, "Woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites; for you are like whitewashed tombs, which on the outside appear beautiful; but inside they are full of dead men's bones and all uncleanness." Beside that verse, I have this note. What do I look like on the inside? Verse 28, "So you too outwardly appear righteous to men; but inwardly you are full of hypocrisy and lawlessness." Beside that verse, I have, there's much work to be done in there. Also beside that verse, I have First Samuel, chapter 16, verse 7, the, and I want you to look at that. First Samuel 16, verse 7, the second part of that. This is a reminder of a verse that every one of us knows and knows very well. "God sees not as man sees; for man looks at the outward appearance, but the Lord looks where?" At the heart. "But the Lord looks at the heart." What does my heart look like? Verse 29, "Woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites; for you build the chams of the prophets and adorn the mosques of the righteous, and say..." If we had been living in the days of our fathers, we would not have been partnered with them in shedding the blood of the prophets. So you, Pharisees, testify against yourselves that you are sons of those who murder the prophets; fill up them the measure of the guilt of your fathers. Verse 33, this will be familiar to you. "You serpents, you brood of vipers, how will you escape the sentence of hell?" Or judgment. Verse 34, "Therefore, behold, I am sending you prophets and wise men and scribes; some of them you will kill and crucify, and some of them you will scourge in your synagogues and persecute from city to city, so that upon you may fall the guilt of all the righteous, blood shed on earth, from the blood of righteous, able to the blood of Zechariah, the son of his daddy's name up there, whom you murdered between the temple and the altar." Verse 36, "Truly I say to you, all these things will come upon this generation." 37, Jerusalem, Jerusalem. Anytime that you see a geographical location, you take your green pen, double underline that. That's a piece of land, property, a place. And it's a good thing to do this because in this verse right here and finishing out to verse 39, you're going to see Jerusalem, Jerusalem referred to, and so you would mark it the same way. "Jerusalem, Jerusalem, who kills the prophets and stones those who are sent to her," meaning Jerusalem. How often Jesus said, "I wanted to gather your children together, the way a hen gathers her chicks under her wings, and you, Jerusalem, were unwilling." Verse 38, "Behold, your house is being left to you desolate." Verse 39, "For I," Jesus is speaking here, "for I say to you," who is the "you" there? That's Jerusalem, Jerusalem. "From now on, you, Jerusalem," you mark it the same way, "will not see me until you, Jerusalem, say, 'Blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord.'" Notice all the "do nots" in verses 8 through 10. And notice all the "woe to yous" because it is repeated. Pay attention to that. Now, the thing for chapter 23 and the reason some of you may be saying, "Why is she reading chapter 23? We just read it and never have to read it again." But is there much more than I could say than what was said right there? When he was addressing them, the Pharisees, calling the hypocrites, he's saying, "Do not." He is saying, "Woe to you." I mean, what else needs to be said? So my theme for chapter 23 is, "Humble yourselves," verse 12. Because that is, for me, that was application. The very first thing that I thought about when I looked at the application in this verse, in this chapter, is serve others, and I found that in verse 11. How are we doing in our serving? Verse 12 tells us, "Humble yourselves." Verse 5 told us this, "Do, but not to be noticed by men," by others, here. You don't have to get on there and you would tell everybody, "Well, I paid my tithes this week," or "I gave an offering," or you know. Do, because if you'll remember early on, we looked at the definition of a servant and the very first word that is in the Greek word for that is "deo," do, because a servant does. And then the fourth thing that I thought about the inapplicable to us is to show mercy and be faithful. And that was found in verse 23. When you look at chapter 24, if you have the New Inductive Study Bible, you can see in the front of your Bible on page 40, the NISB 40, the illustration of the temple mound. It's pretty interesting to look at. I'm not sure if I didn't ask Vicky if she would post a picture of that for those of you who do not have this Bible because you know that having this Bible is not a prerequisite to take any study that we have. I just wanted to point it out for those who have that Bible, to look there at that illustration. But in chapter 24, verse 1, Jesus came out from the temple. The disciples came up to point out the temple to Him and He just came out of there. And I want to show you some of the things that I marked in this chapter. So if you did not mark any of this, this right here is a really good illustration for you just to mark one or two of these words when you see them in chapter 24. But like chapter 23, I want to read this chapter as well because repeating these helps us to retain more. And we all know the passage of Scripture in Romans that says, "Faith comes by hearing, and hearing by the word of God." So let's start at verse 2. Now, I hope, let me see, I hope that if you marked anything in chapter 24, that you marked Jesus, that you marked Him, His, He, that you all, that you marked that because then you'll see how many times where He's referred to. "And he," Jesus said to them, now, well, let me tell you what I did with the disciples. I just took a green, a light green, like a lime green, and I just colored the disciples because I wanted to know who He was talking to, so I would always know by that color. "Do you," talking to the disciples, "not see all these things, all these things? Truly I say to you, 'Not one stone here will be left up and up on another, which will not be torn down.' As he was sitting on the Mount of Olives, there's your place, there's your geographical location, you can double underline it, "the disciples came to him privately, saying, 'Tell us, when will these things happen, and what will be the sign of your coming and of the end of the age,'" there's your time phrase. "And Jesus answered and said to them," listen to this, y'all. I took my red pen and I circled this number, this verse right here. "Jesus answered and said to them, 'See to it that no one misleads you.'" Verse 5, "For many will come in My name, saying, 'I am the Christ,' and will mislead many. You will be hearing of wars and rumors of wars; see that you are not frightened; for those things must take place, but that is not yet the end. For nation will rise against nation, and kingdom against kingdom, and in various places there will be famines and earthquakes." I actually like how the King James translation reads verse 7 there, which is why I have KJ do the side of that verse. Verse 8, "But all these things," listen to this, "are nearly the beginning of the birth pains," or the sorrows. Y'all, this is telling us what to look for, what to expect, what we're going to encounter. Verse 9, "Then they will deliver you to tribulation, and will kill you; and you will be aided by all nations," and he tells why. "Because of My name, at that time, many will fall away, and will betray one another, and hate one another." Verse 11, "Many false prophets will arise, and will mislead many." I cannot say it enough. We need to be in the Word of God every day so that we are not easily misled, that we are not among the many that are going to be misled. Because lawlessness, verse 12, is increased. Most people's love will grow cold. And beside this, I put, this is visible in today's society, right here. Verse 13, "But the one who endures to the end, he will be saved, he will be whole, he will be protected." 14, "This gospel of the kingdom shall be preached in the whole world as a testimony to all the nations, and then the end will come." There's your time phrase right there. Therefore, anytime you see the word "therefore," this is how I mark it, three little dots. Because it causes you to stop to find out what this "therefore" is actually there for. It's telling us to put on brakes a minute. Therefore, when, because that means you're going to, "when you see the abomination of desolation, which was spoken of through Daniel the prophet in Daniel 9:27, standing in the holy place, let the reader understand, then those who are in Judea must flee to the mountains; whoever is on the housetop must not go down to get the things out that are in his house; whoever is in the field must not turn back to get his cloak; but woe to those who are pregnant, and to those who are nursing babies in those days." Verse 20, "But pray that your flight, or your fleeing, or your escape will not be in the winter or on a Saturday; for then there will be a great tribulation, such as has not occurred since the beginning of the world until now, nor ever will. Unless those days have been kept short, no life, no flesh basically would have been saved; but for the sake of the elect, those days will be cut short. Then, if anyone says to you," who is the "you" there? "The disciples." "Behold, here is the Christ; for there he is," what does it say? "Do not, do not believe him; for false Christ and false prophets will arise, and will show great signs and wonders, so as to mislead, if possible, even the very elect." Verse 25, I put a red ink pen circle around verse 25. "Behold, I have told you in advance. So if they say to you," talking here to the disciples, "Behold, he is in the wilderness," what does it say? "Do not go out." Or if they say... Or if they say, "Behold, He is in the inner rooms," do not believe them. "For just as the lightning comes from the east, and flashes even to the west, so will the coming of the Son of Man be. Wherever the corpse is, there the vultures will gather." Verse twenty-nine, "But immediately, after the tribulation of those days, the sun will be darkened, and the moon will not give its light, and the stars will fall from the sky, and the powders of the heavens will be shaken. And then the sign of the Son of Man will appear where? In the sky. And then all the tribes of the earth will mourn, and they will see the Son of Man coming on the clouds of the sky," and it tells us how. "With power and great glory." So when someone comes and says, oh, He's there in the field, you will know by reading this chapter how He's coming. So do not be misled. He's telling us how. We don't want to be among the many that are upset. "And He will send forth His angels with a great trumpet, and they will gather together His elect from the four winds, from one end of the sky to the other. Now learn the parable from the fig tree, when its branch has already become tender, and puts forth its leaves. You know that Son is near. All of these things were told, if we'll just read them. So you two, when you see all these things, recognize, or know is what that means, that He is near, right at the door. Truly, I say to you, this generation will not pass away until all these things take place. Heaven and earth will pass away, but My words will not pass away. But of that day and how, no one knows, not even the angels of heaven, nor the Son, but the Father alone. For the coming of the Son of Man will be just like the days of Noah, for as in those days before the flood, they were eating and drinking, marrying and giving in marriage, until the day that Noah entered the ark, and they did not understand until the flood came and took them all away. So will the coming of the Son of Man be. Then, time phrase, there will be two men in the field. One will be taken, and one will be left. Two women will be grinding at the mill. One will be taken, and one will be left. Verse forty-two, let me tell you what I did with this. I took my yellow pen, and I put a block all the way around this verse right here. And then I took a white little pencil, and I colored the whole verse in, just so that anytime I open up Matthew twenty-four, that's where my eyes are going to. Therefore, be on the alert; for you do not know which day your Lord is coming. But we do know this, we know He is coming.
That's right.
We do know He is coming, and it tells us, be alert. Verse forty-three, "But be sure of this, that if the head of the house had known at what time of the night the thief was coming, he would have been on the alert, and would not have allowed his master to be broken into." Verse forty-four, I did the same thing to this. I took my yellow pen, I put a block all around that verse and colored it blue. Listen to this, "For this reason you also must be ready; for the Son of Man is coming at an hour, when you do not think that He will. Who then is the faithful and sensible slave, whom His master put in charge of His household, to give them their food at the proper time? Blessed is the slave whom His master finds so doing, when He comes, because we know He's coming. Y'all, be on the alert. Verse forty-seven, "Truly, I say to you, that He will put Him in charge of all His possessions. But if that evil slave," you see right here where you find that word, but, the contrast right here, what we just read versus what we're about to read. "But if that evil slave says in his heart, 'My master is not coming for a long time,' and begins to beat his fellow slaves, and eat and drink with drummers, the master of that slave will come on a day when He does not expect him, and at an hour which he does not know, and will cut him in pieces, and assign him a place with the hypocrites, in that place where there will be weeping and gnashing of teeth." That's pretty powerful stuff right there. So my theme for chapter twenty-four is the Son of Man will appear in the sky. And that is found in verse thirty. Again, for all of you who are new to the study of God's Word, this is how and who you will know how He's coming. Because so-and-so can tell you, again, He's out in the field. I saw Him myself. Well, that's a contradiction to what the Word of God says, and this is how we will know it is coming, because He's coming in the clouds. So the Son of Man will appear in the sky. So my application, see to it that no one misleads you, and that's found in verse four. It tells us in this chapter, do not be frightened by wars and rumors of wars. These things have to happen. Verse thirteen tells us, endure to the end. Do not believe if anyone says to you, behold, here is the Christ, or there He is, because verse thirty tells us where Christ will appear. In the sky, and then, I love how it tells how. How and great glory. We're told to be on the alert, be on the alert. We don't know which day the Lord is coming, but we know He's coming. Be ready, the Son of Man is coming in an hour you do not think He will, and be faithful, that is the last application. And I will confess to you that I don't look for the Lord to come every day that I wake up. And if we did, what a different life we would live. Do we wake up in the morning? Sometimes we do, and think, today, it could be the day. Before I leave work, or before I lay my head down to rest tonight, it could be today. And what a different life we would live. We know He's coming. He said it, and He told us how, but He didn't tell us when. So we're to be on the alert. So this is just a reminder to us, and again, I, normally I don't ever read a whole chapter to you all because you've read it. Some of you may not have had the opportunity, so I'm glad that I did it. But when I came to these two chapters, I just thought, we've got to read these. We've got to listen carefully to these, and take our time with that. So if you look in chapter twenty-five, I'm going to paraphrase verses one through twelve. You have the story of the ten virgins, five were foolish, five were wise or prudent. "The foolish ones did not take oil with them for their lances." The five wise women did. We know there was a delay in the coming of the bridegroom, when all the virgins became drowsy, and they began to sleep. "And at midnight a shout came, and the announcement of the bridegroom came, when all the virgins rose, and trimmed their lances." And when I came to the word trimmed, I looked that up, I had to look it up, and the original word for trimmed is kosmeo, K-O-S-M-E-O, which you can see our word, ladies, for cosmetics in that. And here's what it means. It means to put in proper order, that is, to decorate, literally or figuratively. Adorn, or garnish, or trim. Are we being wise in preparing for the return of Christ? Do we make things that we know He needs to clean up in us a matter of prayer on a regular basis? It seems like the last little bit, most of everything that I've prayed about has been the same thing, same thing, same thing. And I, you know, I knelt down today, and, um, I, I said, "Lord, I'm sorry that I'm coming to you once again for the same thing." And I will tell you this, I do apologize many times to the Lord. I'm sorry that this is all you've got to use tonight for this study, because I feel very unworthy, because I don't have it all together. And He knows that, and He knows me inside and out. But I said, if you'll just remove me, you know who's listening, you know who's going to hear this at some point in time. And if you could just use me as a voice to say something, to encourage someone, or teach them something that they didn't know, Lord, I'm willing. I'm sorry, this is the best you've got tonight. You know, because Tuesdays are rough days for me, because it's Bible study day. And, um, so I found myself once again praying about some of the same things. And then when I read this, I thought, how am I preparing for His coming? Are we adorning ourselves with His Word, and trimming away with what needs to be gone? "The five foolish realized they didn't have enough oil, hence they had to leave the same to go to the dealers and buy some. And while they were away to make the purchase, we know the bridegroom came, and those who were ready went with them to the wedding feast, and then the door was shut. The foolish five returned and said, Lord, Lord, open up for us. And He said, I do not know you, but we're not ready. Let's be ready, because we know from chapter twenty-four He's coming back, and we're told in the clouds. Again, let no one deceive you until you see in the field, the wilderness, or the inner ruins. Even if they display signs and wonders, do not be led, but do be ready." Now, verse thirteen in chapter twenty-five is a standalone verse for me. "Be on the alert then, for you do not know the day nor the hour." So in verse fourteen, verses fourteen through twenty-eight, we're not going to read that. But we have a man going on a journey who had slaves who'd been entrusted different amounts of talents to, and one talent, if you look in the side of your Bible, for my Bible, it was worth about fifteen years of wages of a laborer. So to one slave, he gave five talents; to another, he gave two; and to another, he gave one. And as you know, two of the three men invested enough money to buy a hole, and he hid the talent. Did you all stop and think, which one of those would I be? I did. I thought, would I be so careful and so faithless that I'd be the one that went out there and dug that hole and put that in there, so, well, when he come back, I'd be off the crowd, but he had his money. I didn't spend it, I didn't lose it, you know? Or would I have been the one to have invested that and doubled it, you know? Just a question there. But we know that the master said, well done, good and faithful slave, to the one who did the five talents, you were faithful with a few things. I will put you in charge of many. Enter into the joy of your master. Second man who was entrusted with two talents, who also gave two more, his master said the same thing to him, as he did to the first man. Well done, good and faithful slave. You were faithful with a few things. I will put you in charge of many. Enter the joy of your master. Would he say that, and can he say that to us? I've trusted you with these little things. How faithful are we? Because see, we, we put emphasis on how big, how much, how, how great, how grand, instead of putting focus on what He's called us to do, where He's called us to do it, and are we going to be faithful in that? We then read in verse twenty-four, where the one received the money, and hid it in a hole, didn't come out, so well. In verse twenty-five, his fear got the best of him, so instead of investing, he hid the money. The response of the master wasn't the same, because he said, you wicked, lazy slave. You knew that I reap where I did not sow, and gather where I scattered no seed; then you ought to have put my money in the bank, and on my arrival, I would have received my money back with interest. Verse twenty-eight, therefore, take away the talent from him, and give it to the one who has the ten talents, which was the first one. What does fear keep us from doing? Does our fear override our faith? These are notes that I made, because these are questions I had to ask myself. Do we hide ourselves in a hole, so to speak? We can see in this chapter where faith is very beneficial, because we all want to hear, the Lord's well done. Are we fearful or faithful with what God has entrusted to us? And I feel certain that every one of us wants to be faithful, but sometimes being fearful gets the best of us. We're not all the same, thankfully. He doesn't entrust us with the same talents and income, but what He doesn't trust us with, what are we doing with it? Would He say to you, "You were faithful with a few things, I'm going to put you in charge of many things"? Is that what He'd say? Enter into the joys of your master? Or would He say, you wicked and lazy slave, and take back what He gave us? What are you doing, what am I doing, with what God has entrusted each of us? So let's look at verse twenty-nine in chapter twenty-five. "For to everyone who has more shall be given, and he will have an abundance; but from the one who does not have even what he does have shall be taken away." Makes me think of the saying, the rich get richer before we get poor. Do you expect that? The fearful and faithless slave, here's what happened to him, see verse thirty. "Throw up a worthless slave into the outer darkness; in that place there will be weeping and gnashing of teeth." So in verse thirty-one, if you have the NISB, you can see that that is a new paragraph, because that number is involved. And in the last fifteen verses, we read about the Son of Man, and the contrast between the sheep and the goats, and the righteous versus the accursed, and eternal life versus eternal punishment. Now, if you look at verse thirty-one through forty-six, I'm not going to read all of that, because we are running out of time. But I hope that you noticed, and I marked this when I read back through it, that starting in verse thirty-one, the Son of Man, it says, He will sit on His glorious throne. Verse thirty-two says, He will separate the nations, one from another, as the shepherd separates the sheep and the goats. In verse thirty-three, it says, He will put the sheep on His right. The goats will be on the left. Verse thirty-four, "The king will say to those on His right," being the sheep, "Come, you who are blessed of My Father, inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the foundation of the world." And then in verse thirty-seven, you'll see that the righteous will answer him. Verse forty, "The king will answer the righteous." And verse forty-one, "He will address the goats on the left, the goats." He will. And verse forty-four, "They," talking about those goats, the unrighteous, it says, "they will answer." And in verse five forty-five, it says, "He will answer them." And verse forty-six, you'll see that these, which are, he's talking about the unrighteous, those referred to as the goats, it says, "will go away into where? Eternal punishment, but the righteous, eternal life." So the word "will" is not maybe or might, it is will. This is what will be said, and what will happen, and I hope that you know the contrast. And then I hope that you looked up your cross references regarding eternal life in your Bible, starting with verse, uh, Matthew nineteen, verse twenty-nine. And there are several cross references in regards to eternal life later. So my theme for chapter twenty-five is be on the lur, on the alert. You do not know the hour, the day. Because when I turn my Bible over to the last chapter of Matthew, and I place my chapter themes on those, that page, I'm going to look at chapter five, twenty-five, and I'm going to see that chapter's telling me to be on the alert, because I don't know the day or the hour. And listen, how easy do we forget that? We get caught up in life, and all that's happening, and we're not really concerned about being on the alert. So this is just a reminder through our walk of Matthew. The application, three things. Pray to be wise and ready, like the five proven virgins. Pray to be faithful over what he's entrusted you with, and where God has placed you. You don't need man's approval, you need to be where God has planted you, doing what God has called you to do. The talents, the gifts, all that he's entrusted you with. And the last thing is to pray to be attentive and intentional, because we didn't read this passage of scripture tonight. You've already read it. Pray to be attentive and intentional, to feed the hungry and thirsty, to clothe the poor, to visit or reach out to someone who is sick and or in prison, because of what verse forty says, "To the extent that you did it to one of these, even the least of them you did it to make." Pray to be intentional. Father, thank you so much for such a strong word to us, your believers, through these three chapters. It's a little different than what we've been studying, but God, I thank you for it, and I pray, God, that you would help me to be more intentional about your Word, to apply it, to live it. Help me to be on the alert. Help me to be watchful. Help me to hunger for your Word, so that I will never be among the many who will be led away. I pray for discernment. I pray for a sweet spirit, Lord. And I pray for all the areas in my heart that need to be fixed and corrected, that you would do a work in me, because I need you to do it. And I invite you to convey it in those areas. Make us more like you. Fill us with your Spirit, Lord, and help us to be light and salt in Jesus' name. Amen.